Alright, so I think Max we can start now. If you go into the first question. Okay, so for the first question, um what is spyware? Um what do you guys think the answer for that one is A, B, C, or D?
Drop your answers in the chat box. Okay, I see D's, okay.
Yep, D, that's correct.
Okay, so we're getting a few D's. Yes.
Since D is correct. This is going phenomenal.
So does anyone thinks?
Otherwise.
So spyware.
Yep, software. Go on.
Yes.
Okay, so basically spyware is malware that is that can be installed on your computer and it tracks your keyboard, so you know, when you type on your keyboard, like let's say you're entering a password or something. It basically records all the keys that you push and then it transmits it to someone else. So basically someone can just take your password by tracking your keypad. Uh why it can't be C? No, it doesn't analyze data um to find an email address or pod and then to post it. I mean C, okay.
Spyware does not post it on any website. It's just it gives it passes it on to a third we- third party, which is probably a hacker.
Yeah, and the definition for C also isn't complete because it doesn't say anything about um key tracker or keylogger.
Yeah, the main function of a spyware is to record your keystrokes. That's that's it. That's spyware basically.
Are we go to that?
Uh by the way, I cannot see the chat.
Yeah.
Same time.
Yep, okay.
You guys get to read the chat.
And it also be access through webcam. Um I don't believe so. I think that's a different malware.
By no spyware cannot uh it's spyware basically because your keystrokes of your keyboard, that's it. But uh there will be malware switch can access through webcams.
Okay, for the next question, which is um describing two types of malware. Actually, if you can move here. Um so I think one of the most common ones, definitely virus. So um what does a virus do? It's basically software or a program code that can replicate. Um and it needs an active host too. That's very important. Um and basically it damages your files and any data stored on the device.
Everyone got a file of viruses? Alright, and another one that's really popular and always comes up is ransomware.
Wait, guys, relax.
An active host basically just a a user.
Okay, yes, continue.
So whenever this virus is downloaded and the user has it on their computer, then once they start using a computer like going through files, the virus obviously begins to replicate and damage it. With that being said, another popular malware is ransomware. It's actually used a lot. Like they'll ask you at the definition for ransomware a lot in IG computer science. And basically what it is, it's it is just a ransom. They take your files under ransom, so they lock your files encrypted. So there's no way you can access it. And then they would give you a message saying you need to pay a certain amount before they can release and give you your data back. The fact here is obviously that they will delete your files and important information if you don't, so. Yep.
But it's essentially um online blackmailing through ransomware.
Be good? Any questions?
If you have any questions, yep, just use the chat.
I see someone typing, so I'll just give that a while.
This is going great.
Yeah, that's what ransomware is. They basically ransom your files and important information. And only gives it back if you pay a certain amount.
Okay, so someone asked um the differentiation between worms and viruses. So worms is worms can also replicate themselves, but um they don't do not need an active host and worms spread more um sort of um they spread more um increasingly to o- other computers too, which a virus is based on a target computer and its o- its sole operating system, whereas um worms are based on spreading onto other computers too. I think that's it for questions. Um Max, we can move on to the next question then.
Alright.
Alright, proxy servers and firewalls. Um can anyone here tell me tell us what a firewall is?
Are we getting the answers?
Yep, that's right. It monitors incoming and outgoing traffic, basically filtering your data. What's allowed in and what's allowed. Yeah, what's all it out. With that being said, does anyone know any distinct differences between firewalls and proxy servers?
Proxy servers do hide the IP address.
Are you guys familiar with what a proxy server is? Like why we need it and generally what it is?
Okay, this is fun.
Yeah, so basically what it is, whenever you access a website, they will hold you in this thing called a proxy server, right? And it acts as kind of a gateway, so it's kind of like a check. Yeah, they are used to prevent data attack, yeah. And what this gateway does is it essentially um keeps keeps the data of the website safe before the user can actually enter it. So it's only when they get this thing called a digital certificate that it will allow users to pass through.
Now looking at the similarities, we have um it monitors and filters incoming and outgoing traffic. Um both proxy and firewalls um keep a log of the traffic as well as um they both uh block unauthorized access, which obviously is their main goal. Um
And
then moving on to the difference, yeah, proxy servers can hide IP addresses, but firewalls cannot. Other ones um also include that proxy allows faster access to webpages because po- proxy servers use our memory cache. Um and a firewall does not use cache at all. Um also, proxy can hide internal network from the internet while a firewall cannot. Yep. I think we've got a few of those in the chat too. Alright, so we can move on to the next question, Max.
Okay, sure, yes.
Alright, so a programmer has designed a three D interactive computer game that they are going to the um and they're gonna use a program to help develop the game. The program needs to run efficiently, but also must be developed as soon as possible. So in this instance, with the programmer use high level or low level language?
Okay, actually, do you guys know the difference between high level and a low level language? That's that's small.
Okay, so we've got high level language in the chat. They can use both, yeah.
Both are correct, yes.
Yeah, but you just need to be able to explain why you choose which answer, obviously. But um yeah, tech- most likely it should be high level cuz um it's easier to write, it's easier to debug. Um and to understand as well cuz um low level for machine code, it's really you the codes and everything, it's way harder to um debug and understand. It also takes up um yeah, high level also takes up more memory space, so for if you need le- if you need to use um less memory, then low level would be better.
Yeah, and I think that Kristen um dressed was some so- summarized it quite well. If you're using low level language, you're basically down to the machine code. You're you're able to save more memory space because you're not you know, the computer doesn't have to convert all these all these things, right? And so that also means that you can directly manipulate memory. Yep.
Alright, cool. So we can move on to the next question now.
Yeah, everyone gets it. Alright, compiler and interpreter.
Yeah, so the programmer chooses the high level language. They can use a compiler or an interpreter to translate the high level language into a low level language. Um so basically describe the operation of each of those. So what do you guys think a compiler and an interpreter does? And this is um a four marker, so you need two points for each compiler and each um and interpreter.
You guys should be rather familiar with this.
Can you guys give give us some examples of compiling language and interpreted language? Programming languages.
Right, yep. A compiler translates all the program in one code um in one go and it produces one executable um code, like one whole set. Compiler is faster, yep.
This is another main thing that a compiler does that an interpreter does not.
Mm-hmm, I don't think anyone's mentioned.
I had a video. Uh yeah, compiler produces an executable file. So normally when you're writing your code and you're not done with it, you'd use an interpreter. However, once you finish your code and you just wanna do a whole check of it, you would then use a compiler.
Yep, and also for a compiler, um it does produce an error report, which uh with all of the errors found for the whole code before it actually runs the code. Um obviously producing an executable file too. Um whereas interpreter does it line by line, so it gives you the um errors um in each li- line that is found.
Everyone cool with that?
Because I think we all those, yep.
Alright, I think. Alright, let's go.
Should we move on? Okay.
Alright, uh the conversion, oh.
One sec.
Yep, it's tilted, okay, it's cool.
Am I am I audible? Can you guys hear me?
Okay, so conversions, I think, yep. So what's eight bytes equal to?
Sixteen nibbles, yep, that's correct.
Yep.
Five hundred and twelve KB bytes. Yep, zero point five ma- ma- maybe bytes. Yep, four thousand nine, four thousand ninety-six. And yep, that's correct. One thousand twenty-four.
Yep. So you just gotta use to the power of twos basically for these questions.
Yeah, you guys should be pretty familiar with this by now. They give you working space, but I doubt you really need it. So anyway.
Yes. Well, dividing and the multiplying takes up some space.
Alright, RAM. So.
One moment.
Oh, we know this.
Is commonly stored. RAM, yep.
How would you do if I working space? I mean, some people can just instantly compare in the head, you know? Obviously, using.
That's no, some. Yeah, cuz like um it's been re- it's so repeatedly there in the questions. If you practice a lot, you can get it, but then obviously to like use the one zero two numbers. Yep.
Three parts of DOS. Um yep, that's one currently running data. So any apps open yet?
Mm-hmm.
Any more?
Also, um with the in OS system, any sort of um running parts of that and like the factory set settings that are stored in RAM. So basically, any sort of running data um at the moment is in RAM. That is running application software, running utility software, running OS, um running instructions, ru- program code, so on.
Uh what do you mean, unden? What will be stored in ROM? Factory settings, yeah, factory settings will be stored in ROM because that's how you boot up your computer. Alright, next question. Describe the purpose of secondary storage.
Uh hello, my test. Can you guys hear me? Living and and Z. Wait, i- is the chat hearing me? Are you guys are able to hear me? Because I don't think this two are able to hear me.
Stores non-volatile data, not necessarily, you know?
Bro, I swear to God, bro. What if you have muted or something?
That uh that is used to transfer, yep. So whenever you're transferring data from one to another, you you plug in like your USB or something and then transfer. Oh wait, what? Max, you can't hear you speaking though.
I am speaking, dude. I've been speaking.
Different account. He's using two different accounts for sharing and.
No, I don't, I dude, I was speaking on this account. How how are you guys not hearing me, dude?
Alright, so I think we're done with that question. Basically, uh second storage is just uh for storing non-volatile storage um and data that's not required by the CPU. Yep, secondary storage is used as swap space in virtual memory. Um so virtual memory takes um I think it so it work I remember is it shifts um data, old data from RAM into the secondary storage and then it creates um swap space of a bitmap. Where you can input currently current that you data that you currently need in the on the actual RAM, so it makes up space. So, yep. Okay, we can move on to the next question now. Okay, so these definition questions, um what is meant by a pixel and resolution? Um if you guys can type in the chat.
Try and stay simple, like a lot of people would typically overthink this a lot.
Yep, okay, so the smallest measurement of.
Um I guess so, but maybe it's like like a bit more specific. Picture element of a single either unit. Yeah, I guess that.
Yeah, you'd have to say that. Mm-hmm, this it's the smallest um part of an image, yep. Basically, that's it. Um and then for the resolution, that's basically the number of pixels. Um so you do length times width um of whatever it is um in an image. Yep.
Yep, that's right. Okay.
So so let's move on.
Yep, we can move on.
Yep.
I said, I've been speaking on that account. You guys can hear me. Everyone else can hear me.
Right.
Actually.
No.
Actually, yeah. That's I'm like, why are you two ignoring me?
Let's let's move on.
Didn't hear you.
Let's move on, let's move on.
Max, you went on the stage, so we couldn't hear you.
Ah, no, no one could hear you.
No, I was speaking for the from the account I was streaming from. They can hear me, but you two can't hear me.
Nah, you said no one could hear you.
Oh my days, I give up. It's just got right side, it's just got. Let's move on, bro.
Anyway.
Yeah.
So image has the resolution thousand times thousand with color depth of two bytes. So anyone wanna do that?
This is pretty simple, guys. Let's go. I see.
As the remarks.
It is um it's two million bytes. Yep.
Alright. Thousand times thousand and times two because of depth of two. Alright, that's easy.
Yeah.
Just the image resolution times the color depth. Okay, I'm moving on to the next question.
Storage device to backup the complete the description of solid state. Storage user terms from the list. Some of the terms in the list will not you should only use such. Okay, so solid solid state storage is dash, which means it cannot be lost when the power is turned off.
Yep, it is non-volatile.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow, someone gave a couple of the answers. Um so it is non-volatile.
Yeah, I see. All the correct answers, okay.
And solid straight um solid storage, um solid state storage is made of resistors, yep.
That's a laid out in a case are not used to control the flow of the electron, what do you need through the transistor? Alright.
That's fair. Okay, and yeah, I continue.
Okay, these are not used to control the electrons through the transistor. This changes the data in the transistor from one to zero or from zero to one.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, what 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 is not?
It's a typo.
Yeah, probably a typo. Oh, anyway, we got that then. So.
Let's move on.
One reason why a file is compressed.
That's easy. Okay, give us few reasons. Kind of like what? Two, three, I think maximum would be two or three reasons. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's.
Faster transfer, correct? Okay, reduces file size, okay, correct? There's one specific answer, okay, but I like this answer very much. Let's see more. This is time of transmission, okay. How does it reduce the time of transmission? The bandwidth, yes. Less bandwidth is bad. Correct. What is band? Who cares answer this?
Think of bandwidth like your like your data getting blocked, right? Like all all of your data is like in this one um traffic line, right? So obviously, if you compress it, the data becomes smaller than you know, it can get transmitted easier. Do you get it?
Are we, let's move on. Push your mark.
Uh so imagine um bandwidth, right? You have like a line of traffic. And in this traffic line, the cars are huge, right? So because it has a huge dip lock up the whole road. And so nothing's moving because all the space is being taken. But let's say you have smaller cars now. If the car is smaller, then that means more cars can pass through. And so yeah, it's easier. Alright.
Shall move on.
Next one.
Living. Care to continue?
Yeah, sure. So a website allows users to purchase items. Um computer receives the request for the homepage to the website SOLO. The request is sent using packet switching. Um identify two items of data contained in a packet header. Okay, so packet switching and the data packets. What do you guys think? Two items stored in the packet header. Destination and IP address, yep. Packet number, yes. Destination and IP address, yep. Packet number, yes. IP address of sender, yep. Those are easy marks. Sender receive IP address. There's one more that hasn't been mentioned yet. Not file size. File size um I believe is in one of the other parts of um.
Error checker, correct? Uh error detection methods.
Yeah, um so file size is actually stored in the payload, not in the header. Okay, moving on to the next one. So two other elements of the packet. What are they? Payload and trailer, yeah. I think we're good to move on now, Max.
Alright.
I thought. Yeah, ah yeah, so the interesting thing about. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so the error checker, the error detection method is in the um header. And the actual sort of um data, this I think it's the CRC that you use for packet switching, that is in the trailer. So the actual, let's say if you use checksum, that's gonna be stored in the trailer. Yeah.
But the method of how to do it is in the header.
Yeah.
And we already mentioned the payload trailer for that other one, so we're on to this, okay?
Alright, let's move on.
Alright, so um computer A needs to be directly connected to a router that is located in a different room. Take one box to um choose either serial or parallel data transmission. Um cause it's connected in a different room. For this one um. You could choose either one, but it's it depends on how you explain it. Um so let's say we do parallel. It's faster transmission speed than serial, obviously. Um next room is better connection for parallel compared to serial. But then obviously with serial, cause it's bit by bit, it's less likely to have errors and data skewing.
Yeah, and another thing, they don't mention it here, but I think with parallels um your room could get really messy with a lot of. Wires going everywhere, so that would probably be another reason why you use serial.
Alright, so let's move on to the next question. Shen five, three, cut to connection. But also use full duplex data transmission, define full duplex data transmission. Full duplex data transmission is where they can goes both directions, but it seems. That should land as an easy.
Well duplex easy, right? Yep.
I see he goes sir in the chat. What are you doing? I'm doing to now. Yes, good to hear. Okay, uh can we move on, guys?
Yeah, guess so.
Alright, yes. Okay, living, take over.
Yep, so the data transmission uses parity checks um. And so we need to complete the parity bit for each byte, and it's an even parity byte check. So um for the first one, obviously there are already four ones, so the first parity would be zero. And for the second one, um there are none um no ones, so it'd be a zero again. To uh maintain the even parity check.
Everyone gets what a party party checking, right? Yeah, you guys should be fine with this.
I think we're good to move on.
And so yeah, next question is explained.
Yep, a parity block check. Uh my detect ten um error in transmission that would not be detected by a parity byte check and explain how. So with the block check, you can actually um tell which bytes are changed, uh I mean sorry, which bits are changed exactly. Cause you can um sort of check the crossover between the block. Um and parity check only detects the that there is an error. It doesn't actually give you the the interchange bits. That have changed over. So that's the actual difference um. Yep, so basically the position of the changes is shown in parity block check, whereas in parity check it's not. I think we are good to move on to the next question, Max.
Alright. Oh, since someone sent this question in chats. Am I just? Okay, yes, continue.
Alright, so um for this question, um bit bit number and byte number of the incorrect. Um bit, basically. So it uses even priority blocks, you've gotta go through each one. So the first one is it has four, that's good, that's two, four. Six again, and then so okay, the byte four has three bits only. So that's going to be your byte that is um with the incorrect bit. Um yep, that one. And then, cause and then you go through the bits, so uh the first. Bit has one, two, three, four, good. Then again, six um. Two. And four, one, two, two, one, two, three. Okay, then bit six should be bit six, yeah. Bit six byte four.
Are we good on how to get that?
Have we told?
We good?
Did you find the bits again? It's the same. We just found all the ones. And if it's not even, then yeah, that's wrong.
That's incorrect one, yeah. And then for odd, it's the other round.
Yeah, so you just go down on the table where it says bit. Can you get that?
She to move on? Okay, yes, let's move.
Okay. So one function that they gave you. Uh two functions that it gave you of a web browser are to render HTML and to display webpages. To and to store cookies. So two other functions of a web browser. I mean, there's obviously a lot more than two, but.
Yeah, there should be so many, they're like what, five, six?
Oh, a lot. I think it's like ten, twelve. In the book that is um there's.
It should be in the book, there's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, even in like um what Cambridge accepts in specification, yeah. So um if you guys can just type in the chat, the answer for this one.
You use cookies? They already mentioned that to s- to store cookies. So you can give other other reasons.
Yep, an easy one, I think um is definitely it stores your bookmarks. So you know, like the little star that comes up and then you can just hook up the tabs, yep.
I mean, to be to be honest, you you guys use um web browsers every day, right? So any anything you see on there, really, bookmarks, um referring to history, tabs open.
Navigations tool, so many.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we move on. Yes, let's move on. It's already nine uh seven or nine, by the way.
We gotta finish this paper.
Yep, so we just have like ten more minutes, cause um obviously we'll, yeah. Okay, so identify two ways that cookies can be used to enhance the user experience of the website. Um alright, so for this one, cookies, what do they do actually? What do you guys think? Yeah, cookies store items in a shopping cart, yep.
They also store your login details.
What else? Yep, they store uh preferences too for each website. Data privacy entity, yeah. For data privacy entity, you've gotta be more specific, though. Login details, preferences, um shopping basket details, um pages visited. Um you should say preferences, yes. And any sort of like recent purchases on um I don't know, like different websites, um retails, et cetera. I think we're good to move on.
Hmm, yeah, should be.
Oh, sorry. A bad. There you go. I'll just convert it.
Okay, Max, I think um you can go on with the question.
Alright, sure. Uh functions. Nearly every art access is not valid for each other. Alright. So our first one if you calculate, anyone not take a guess? I mean not guess, no one's calculate the first one? Not from YouTube, calm down.
Yep.
Let's give chat. Yes, obviously.
So how do you guys um convert from binary, binary to hexadecimal?
Damn, the chat is dead, okay?
No, I can give give them all.
Yeah, they're typing, just wait for a second.
Alright, okay.
Interesting. Okay, so we'll just cover it really quickly. So um for binary, you just split the number um. Into uh four like four bits each. Um and then you can word hexadecimal, yep, first four from the left. Yeah, okay. Uh that's eight plus four plus two plus one, which is fifteen, and you take that as F. And then the rest is just zero, 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 one, which is just one F.
Yeah, just yeah, it's all binary, binary versions.
Yep.
Everyone should be good at this, right?
Yep, next one will be one zero, zero, something, something. It it should be one triple zero, double one, double zero. Then the next one is ninety, obviously, five eight. The last one is four, one, four, three zeros. Now let's move on.
But with these ones, just be careful that you for the especially the binary, don't miss out any ones or any zeros, cause that happens a lot. You can lose really easy marks too, as much as you can gain them, you can lose them too.
Yeah, sometimes you you may. Like you write an extra one, I'll miss out a zero.
Zero matters.
Yeah, that actually happened in my class.
So when we still have one more question.
Uh this is a new thing they added.
Yeah, the new chapter. Is it chapter six or chapter seven?
It's chapter six, seven is uh problem solving. Um so for chapter six, make sure that you revise AI and robotics a lot. Because it's easy marks and it comes up a lot um in the new papers now.
Yep.
That's that's really good to keep in mind, especially for my variant. May June, it came up a lot. It was like ATZ marks on just robotics.
Ours, I don't think we had that much, like few questions.
Yeah. Well, that may come up. Cause it's a it's a new chapter.
This topic will come up, definitely.
For sure, this one, yeah. This and data security, both five and six, they are major ones.
Of course, yes.
Mm-hmm, one and two are like mild chapters, we'll just go with them. And input output devices won't come up at all, like you do not need to know how each one works. A lot of people um that was in the specification for last year, not this year and becoming yours, so just make sure you know that they exist. But you don't have to know how each of them work.
Like for input and output, they'll basically just ask you like, okay. Which of these is an input device or an output device? I'll give an example of input or output, but. But they won't ask you like how it works, like before if they used to.
Yeah, a lot of like, I'm telling you guys this cause a lot of people made the mistake of revising e- each input and output device like to the core like. Advantages, disadvantages to the application, everything. Until they regretted it, cause none of them up.
That would be me, exactly.
Disadvantages, advantages, not really, you don't need to know that. Just know that they exist. The names and barely like a like two or three applications of each, even that is very unlikely to come up.
The chapter six is where you be careful. Chapter six and chapter five, study that a lot.
Yeah, we didn't realize that chapter five would come up a lot, but it did.
It did, yeah.
Alright, so uh what is meant robotics?
Oh, yeah, we did solve this.
Yeah, I think someone already put in the chat, it's basically the construction and the operating of robots, robot to perform operations.
They should be like design, construction, operation, those three. Can write any to that. Okay, let's move on, next question. Oh, seven marker, okay.
Oh, okay, sensor and microprocessor questions are very easy marks, like seven, eight marks you can get easily. It's.
Yeah, these are for you.
Yeah. Uh which sensor would you use for um checking the actual motion of it?
Yeah, so this is one, a- actually, yeah, good point. This is one place where um input devices can be used, or like sensors in this case.
Proximity sensor, yeah.
Yep, that's that's right, yeah.
Most people's pro uh proximity for this one usually, but it could also be infrared um passive, which checks obviously um. Using the infrared beam and if it cuts through. Okay, and the usual old stuff for this one that the um.
Oh sensors, wait, which chapter is sensor? Is this in chapter chapter six as well?
Chapter three.
Sensor sensor that is often, by the way.
Uh Max, I want to.
Chapter three and chapter six too, it's in both chapters.
Yeah, cause I remember reading like the functions of all the sensors in chapter six.
Oh, really? Okay, that was, yeah, that was in chapter three, but yeah. Chapter six is a brief mention of it.
Oh damn. No, in chapter six, like the last part is basically like three pages of sensors.
Yeah. Um so basically for this one, you mentioned the sensor name, then you say the normal stuff, which is continuously sends digitized data. So um it converts using um what do you call it? The ADC converter analog to digital, the microprocessor compares the data that's stored already with the received data. And if the data is greater than the stored value um. Is it says in the question, the robot needs to turn ninety degrees, the robot will move forward. If it's less than or equal to the stored value, um the microprocessor will send a signal. Um through the control bus to make the robot turn, and the actuator is used for all the movements. And this is a very, very free mark uh point. The whole process is continuous um until it's turned off. Yep, so that's usually the structure of it.
Yeah, sorry, um.
There's no.
You typed on the points that we have.
Sorry?
Someone wants you to type on the points we have.
Alright, um. I think I'll do that and. Oh wait, in the chat or on the thing? I'll do it in the chat, Max. We can move on to the next question.
Alright, okay, okay.
Yeah, also if microprocessor queues um. When you say that the whole processing is continuous, that's that's just one mark. It's not like no matter what microprocessor question comes up, if you just write that. Then it's probably probably one mark. And also identifying the sensor, then whenever you're talking about the micros- microprocessor bit to the actuator and all that, that's just that's just standard.
Alright, so the chapter characteristics of AI, uh AI, okay, collects data. That's definitely is. Uh let's. Stores rules.
So describe the characteristics of a.
It does, yes. It 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 was for rules.
Yes.
Like at the re- Like, uh the re- the predicting or the reasoning it does will be based upon the rules that has been stored.
Yep, they, they have a rule base, then.
And inference base.
Rule base and inference base, knowledge base.
I don't think India mentioned the basis here, only, only if we want.
Yeah, that's true, and they only, as you described the characteristics, so yeah, they have rules, so what else do we have?
Another program will use A I, this is why you can use basis, actually. Biggest C S tip, never trust anything C S that comes out of there. Nah, okay.
Yes, yes, harder, harder does have a lot of unnecessary, and I realized that a week before my actual I G C S E um.
That is true, yeah.
Um including, yeah, including the input output stuff, um there is a lot of unnecessary stuff going on. Um storage devi- storage devices, again, same thing. Um I think unit five and six as well, six a lot, there's like a lot of unnecessary stuff. So you can like simplify it down.
Yeah, I've been in the coverage, yes, textbook, there, there's a lot of random bits of information that you just really don't need to know.
Yep.
Yes, sorry.
Go on, go on, go on.
Now, even in the C S textbook, the problem with it is, uh, there's actually yeah, they have a lot of points which they add that you don't need to know, and there's also some light bits of information that they don't add that you do need to know. So that's typically why I don't use textbooks, especially for C S.
Honestly, for C S, the biggest tip for studying, I think it is like, okay, once you have completed the, reading the book once, don't touch it. Like, serious students, just do pass papers and read the question, I mean the marking, that's literally how I studied for C S.
Yeah.
I didn't even open the book, I just studied book for chapter six. Exactly.
Yeah, just pass papers, even for A levels, it's like there is so much unnecessary stuff um in every single chapter, so just like pass papers are your biggest friend.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
And, and read the marking, like, if, let's say, okay, yeah, go on, go on, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry. Uh, yeah, Z notes is a lot, um good notes for C S, so yeah, you can, you can use Z notes, obviously.
Yes, Z notes is good, I recommend that very much, not sponsored, by the way. Shall we move on?
Yep, did we finish the characteristics of A I? I don't think we did, right?
I, okay, we didn't explain, we didn't explain, we did the characteristics, cause I remember saying it's.
Yeah, we have one, which is it has rules for the data and anything else?
This is algorithm, uh stores successful components slash actions. Yeah, that should be enough. Give it two, two more points needed.
Right, so I'll just send the answer for the uh proximity center question.
Okay, so let's move on, next question, oh, we had that nevermind.
We're at the end, yeah.
Yes, this was the end, yay.
We haven't, uh you guys explained the, the, a program we use A I, right?
Yep.
That question, I think, didn't we go over it?
We did.
Are you guys fine with the last two questions?
Yep.
This is recorded and will be posted.
On YouTube, I think.
So just like, subscribe and share it to your friends and friends. Our internet is.
The other characteristics of A I. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, Enzi, go on.
Go on.
Alright, yeah, so as, as mentioned earlier, um A I has role based system, it also has a knowledge based system, right? So that's essentially knowledge based system, that's where it collects all the data, you know, so you can see that a characteristic of A I is collecting data. Then obviously, A I is um self-adapting, right? So it has this ability to reason, and from that reasoning, that's why we have this thing called machine learning, right? Because, you know, A I learns from patterns and mistakes and how, how it can just improve to, to be better at a, at a very, very fast rate. And I mean, at some point also, um the A I will get used to the data you're entering, because it finds patterns in, in the data, right? So because it finds patterns in the data, you can also use it to make predictions for future data that might occur, so let's say you're doing some I don't know, some science thing, and you want, and you want results for an experiment that you haven't carried out. So yeah, and A I can be used for stuff like that too.
Okay, let's just host a five minute quick Q and A session, then just finish it, seven thirty. Yes, it does find patterns in data.
I mean, honestly, for A I questions, just think about what chat G P T does.
Yes, honestly, yes, for I G S, it's easiest, yeah.
Yeah, I used to say straightforward, yeah.
Very straightforward.
Just make sure you don't like memorize any unnecessary stuff, cause if you use a textbook, there is a ton of that. So like, s- make sure to print out the specification and like take off each point, and then do pass papers, obviously.
Yeah, pass papers is honestly the best for, for C S.
Was chapter six implemented this year? Was it, or is it last year?
Is it, um sorry, I'm not sure what Craig and Dave Fitz are, so I can't really answer that for you. But if you feel the notes are concise enough, then yeah, pro- um and concise and relevant enough, then yeah, do, do memorize it. D I I, okay, explain how the program will use A I, Max, do you wanna do this?
Ah, you can go ahead.
Okay, um. So how the program will use A I, or what is the program, why don't I scroll up so they can see? So basically, the robot needs to find its way through different puzzles, each puzzle has a series of paths that the robot needs to follow. Oh, it's like the one thing they made.
Yep.
Um, yes, obviously, whenever they say anything about A I and how it can be implemented into a program or anything, always mention machine learning algorithms, like, that, that's the very, that's the very thing of why we use A I today, right? It's because they have machine learning, you can learn.
Does anyone know how machine learning works? Don't give me the definition of algorithm, like how it works, just generally. Is that tons of algorithms, like useful algorithms? Did you answer it completely? Is that enough? Can't see.
Um, guess I'll also type this out first, because I wanna expand on what they're seeing, what they're gonna see.
Alright. I have a max session in fifteen minutes, so let's go.
You'll be fine.
Yeah, I will be fine, exactly, as if I wasn't fine like.
I'll come watch, I'll come watch.
You'll be hella fine, Max, totally, we were like totally speaking from the start and.
Totally, I was speaking, you guys didn't hear me, okay, I was speaking a lot of this stuff.
Sure, sure.
I was, I was, okay.
I think we can um stop the recording.
Yeah, use this machine learning. Any files that.
Yes, yeah, then just stop it.
Uh, I wouldn't say that.
It does do.
It's all repeats, I mean, it wouldn't repeat mistakes, right? Yeah, it did not repeat.
Adapt and learn.
Yeah, cause imagine this puzzle thing is like, you send the A I through, through a maze, right? If it goes on one path and it's blocked, then obviously it knows it's wrong, because it can't progress. So, in a sense, when you send it down a wrong path, it collects data, so it knows that that path itself is a mistake, so it won't repeat it. So obviously, because this is done like continuously, right? Uh reinforcement learning, yeah, pretty much, cause you keep feeding it. Yeah, you just feed the A I like all sorts of, all sorts of data, and then you know, eventually the A I will learn to draw patterns from it, right? And so that's why, because it draws patterns from it, then it can make successful predictions, and that's yeah, that's A I for you.
Any more questions, guys? I studied from like all of them, like I s- I started from like twenty seventeen till the latest ones.
Yeah, what, what the heck, twenty seventeen, okay, so guys, start from the start from the most recent ones, so go twenty two, twenty two, twenty three, I mean, twenty three, twenty two, twenty one, back to like eighteen-ish. I, I only went over till I think twenty twenty, twenty twenty one max, cause um it was a bit last minute, but basically, yeah. Just make sure to know like the keywords um you need to include.
For last minute, like five minutes before entering the exam hall, I opened this paper. Wait, no, it wasn't this paper, no, no, it is from last year's uh October, November, some weeks, very intense.
I'll read it.
Very much.
Check those ones, like four hours, four hours before the exam, like the mark schemes.
I checked it like five minutes before I'm supposed to enter the hall. I was, I was just reading the mark scheme, I wasn't even paying attention to the questions.
Okay, so I think someone asked um in the chat, can anyone explain um S S L? So basically, S S L is a protocol, Secure Socket Slayer, um to, it's, it's used for data security, right? So basically, when a user logs onto website, it encrypts the data, and um so it compresses and en- en- encrypts the data. Um, and basically, it's like the little um padlock symbol you get at the top. Oh, if it encrypts the data, any third party that can um, that side oversees the webpage cannot actually access the data, cause it's obviously encrypted. Um which protects um the data, data's integrity. That's basically it.
I have one plus twenty for one zero, oh, one zero is two, so yeah, one plus one is indeed one zero.
Max.
Digital certificate, yeah, just the so basically, if it permits um access to a website, then it'll hand, hand you a digital certificate, so it will auth- authenticate that. It's basically just an authentication of you can enter the website, so yeah.
Yeah, it's needed for like um, like creating the S S L um connection between the website and the um web server.
Sure, is, uh, ah, yes, I'm about to finish, yes. Yes, and you are doing it, you are doing it.
I'm sorry, but I, I didn't know, so pardon this.
Yes, you, you are part of this, I, I forgot to mention it, but.
Yeah, I was going to, Max, actually, I was going to.
You know what, yes, let's all join, let's go, there'll be like five of us. There's four of us, actually, yeah, let's do it, yeah, let's do that, yeah, let's do that, you know what?
So let's end this session.
Yeah, 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 uh try, try back in thirty minutes in live session two format. No, 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 we're, we're finishing it, we're finishing it, yeah, we're gonna start at eight and finish at nine, don't worry. We'll have Living, Enzi, Dismar, and me.
All you'll ever need.
Yes, the only nerds you'll ever meet in a life, hopefully. I will start within thirty minutes, yes, okay, you know what, so let's end this, take a break, mix up coffee, and goodbye, with Max.
Any more questions before we end? Yeah, that's no more questions for land.
Okay, so yeah, we can use this for maths, but, but I, I, bro, okay, let's see, let's see.
One more question, paper tips, yep, alright, so paper two, I think a lot of people have already asked this, but um paper two, essentially, for the pseudocode questions, make sure that you use um good you use and you declare each variable before, before actually writing the code. Um, other tips, um, I have like a whole.
I'll save, familiarize yourself with Python.
Go on, sorry.
Yeah, I'm going on.
Enzi, speak.
Okay, yeah, um basically, pseudocode and Python really do go hand in hand, so try and familiarize yourself with Python and the, the whole logic of how you would um program something, right? So once you get the logic down, I feel once you, once you can understand the logic for Python and how you program stuff, it becomes really easy.
Ah, okay, for the fifteen marker, yes, you can use, but for the other questions, they'll mention like, okay, use a programming language or use pseudocode.
Yeah, just to be safe, um try to use pseudocode for most of.
I don't think they add, yeah, for the marker, you can use Python or pseudocode, but for everything else, it just has to be pseudocode. They do not accept Python.
If, if it's not mentioned, they don't accept.
Unless they, unless they specifically mention that you can use um programming language or something, then yeah, you can use Python. But if, but if they don't mention it, use, use pseudocode.
Right, yeah, just to be safe, yeah. For the marker, make sure that you um have a plan before you code, because um, like, let's say you decide to um initiate a new array in the middle of it, and you've already like written all, all of the previous code down, and then there's like no space, and you're like, cause you need to like adapt the whole code according to it, like add loops and whatever, so make sure you have a good plan before actually coding. Um.
How much time? I wanna say um thirty to forty five minutes, probably.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Oh, with the fifteen marker, don't be like me, cause I spent like forty five minutes on it. Because um we had like three to four arrays, I think we had to do, two, two D arrays and two one D arrays, and it was chaotic. But yeah, make sure to like, yeah.
Yeah, especially like what I. Yeah, especially while I did my exam, right, so I actually started with the fifteen marker, and whenever I got stuck, like I knew like time to think about it, then I'll go to like the front of the paper and start questions there.
Yeah, same, that's exactly what I did, I started with the fifteen marker. Cause we had so much theory going on in our paper.
Yeah.
Yeah, um I'd recommend doing the fifteen marker first, cause like it sort of relieves you and like you can actually focus the start, rather than leaving it till the end and then like being panicked about it.
For the fifteen marker, what I did, I just took a rough paper and just made my rough code on it. Like how many F's will be, how many functions do I need to use, then I just rerouted in the question paper.
Yeah, so in the final exam, basically, you take a scrap paper, ask for scrap paper, and do a plan in pencil. Yep, okay, maybe not, yeah, five to ten minutes maximum for planning.
Yeah, bro, don't take more than five minutes, well, more than ten minutes.
Yeah, uh definitely, so like, yeah, it depends on the question, but like for paper one, memorization intensive parts, um right. So make sure, again, like I said, there's a lot of unnecessary stuff in like throughout the internet, throughout YouTube, throughout the textbook, so make sure you like simplify it down to exactly the points you need to know. And then basically, go through each of them, try to like understand more than just mug it up. And then, like, other tips are basically talk to yourself when you're explaining, um I don't know, disadvantages, advantages, process of a device, so on. Um blurt it out on a rap of, on a blank piece of paper, then compare what you haven't um got on there with what you need to know, and then go over that stuff again. Basically, do this like a lot of times, blurtin helps a lot for theory parts. Um and the talking to yourself too, yep.
This is a very good question.
Yep, it was wise words for me, but go on.
Same, same, people want. Same, same, people want this way to easy.
Yeah.
But it is what it is, we move on from that trauma.
Yep, so basically for paper one, um it's uh yeah, you gotta know your stuff well and like the applications of um each device in there, um each sort of conversions you need to know pretty well. Um the sense of questions, the re- the questions that repeat over and over again, make sure you go over them, commonly asked questions. Um do a bunch of past papers and know like the exact sort of the bold words that they look for in the mark schemes, you need to know those um very well. Cause even if you explain the whole sort of answer well, but then you don't include the keywords, you would not get the mark.
Yeah, keywords are really important, just make sure you really memorize the keywords in the mark schemes.
Yes, read the mask games, they're your best friends.